Gentlemen, at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the Director of the Camden County Board of Commissioners, Lou Capelli.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everybody. Boy, I have to say, it's kind of strange being in this building without Mayor Wright. I gotta tell you, it's my first time into Winslow without the mayor, and I know he's Miss Sorely. He really is. And boy, it's my first time in here too, since it's been renovated. Great job, Winslow. This building is phenomenal. Phenomenal. So we have a very great night, we have a good night tonight. We have Congressman Noah Cross, Assemblyman Moriarty, Mayor Lawrence. And before we get to the program, we always start our town halls off with a Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please stand.
No, inside. It was all renovated.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please be seated. Before we get to tonight's official program, I'm going to ask Congressman Noah Cross to come up to make a very special presentation. Congressman?
Well, good evening, everybody. It's great to be here. Any day I wake up in New Jersey's a good day. Not that we don't love Washington. I just love my New Jersey a little bit more. So this is a continuance of what we have been doing. Over 100 community service meetings as we have here today. And I just want to start out by thanking the county for what they're doing and putting this venue together. But as Lou had mentioned, each time that we start, we just want to take a moment and remember why it is and how it is that we are here together in this great country of ours. And that's because of those who put service before themselves. Those who are less than 1% of our population. Those who have put on the uniform and swore their allegiance as this great, great country of ours. And today, we are blessed to honor Army Master Sergeant George Cathy. So, as he's walking up, let me tell you just a little bit about George. Forty years here in South Jersey. He was born in Pittsburgh, but as I am told, he roots for the Eagles. Is that right?
Yep.
That's right. But listen, joined the Army as a young man in 1961. For those of you who are around, remember what was going on there. The beginning of that war in Vietnam. And he served six years active duty, followed by 18 in the reserves. And then came home to his career in the gas technician service facility. But I want to talk about what he did for our country. Serving in Vietnam in the early days, a radio man. Think about that. Those are the ones that carry that antenna and a target on their back. They are the communications that keep their unit going. He went on to be the First Sergeant of the Intelligence and Surveillance Company. He was the intelligence. The things that he did by his very nature of communicating and bringing together intelligence, saving so many lives that way. But his unit, and those of you who are students of history, remember the big red one. They're the ones in the beginning. They're the ones who had it so tough. He served and received over 12 ribbons and medals for his duties in Vietnam, including the Valor in Combat Action ribbon. Went on to the Army Accommodation Medal, Achievement Medal, and many, many more. But as we all know, for those who serve, nobody serves alone. And this is a point that I'd like to thank his family for sharing him with us. Because as he is off doing the country's duty, his family's at home wondering. And that was back before the cell phones. What you didn't know. And that was, in many ways, so much harder. But continued that service as VFW post, the Winslow Waterford one. But that family man with his wife Cassandra, his son George, who is now, I believe, a Marine. Yes, sir. His daughter Kimberly in the Army. His brother in the Navy. Wonderful. Setting that example for the next generation. You don't see that every day, particularly in this time of conflict within our country. Those who continue to put their service before theirselves. Something that Senator John McCain often talked about. So, and thanking his family for sharing him with us. But most importantly, from a grateful nation, we want to say thank you for your services, country. The symbol of our great democracy is that beautiful building that you all know as the Capitol. Well, every time that Capitol hits daylight, we have a flag that flies over top of it. And on behalf of grateful nation, this is that very flag we'd like to present to you. I'd like to invite my colleagues up here. As a member of Congress, I have the honor to go down to the floor of the House. And as I did just here, to talk about what you have done for this country. And it literally is etched into history as a part of the congressional record. And this will also be part of thank you.
Master Sergeant Cathy, on behalf of the Camden County Board of Commissioners and the 520,000 residents of Camden County, we thank you and honor you. And as a small token of our appreciation, please accept this proclamation honoring your service to the United States of America.
So this might be the toughest assignment. Please come up and address your community. We present to you Master Sergeant George Cathy.
I am, or I used to be, a Master Sergeant.
You are.
I am also a First Sergeant, which is a job that, when you have 600, 700 troops, it's usually one person that stands in front of that formation. And I came through in 1961 is when I was drafted. I was during the Berlin Cuban Crisis, better known as the Bay of Pigs. And from there, I went to Hanau, Germany, and I served with the Third Armored Division. And in my career, I've had at least 15 different jobs. And I'm just happy to still be standing. I'll tell you a little secret. This uniform I have on, and some people don't want to hear this, but it is the way I think. I put this uniform on for my granddaughter that was just up here. When she got married, that young lady over there, I gave her away.
Thank you.
Oh, there he is. Okay, I didn't see you over there. Yeah, I gave her away. And she's precious. I also had the, I was in the operating room when she was born. And other than God Almighty, I saw her ahead before anybody else. And we've been close ever since. That young lady will come and find me no matter what. Other than that, I'm just happy to be here. I'll be 80 March 19th. And like I said, you know, I never thought I would still be here, but here I am in front of you guys. And thank you for anything and everything that you guys have did for me. I really appreciate it.
For those of you who were there, those who came home from Vietnam, came home to a very different world than is here today. So we want to say, welcome home.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You got it?
No, I'll be all right.
I'm sure my colleagues will agree, but the best part of this job is meeting people like the Master Sergeant. There's nothing nicer or better about this job than meeting people like him. So let's hear it one more time. Thank you for your service, sir. He's very proud that the uniform still fits him as well. I would be too. I would be too. Let me take this moment to introduce some of my colleagues on the Board of Commissioners. The Deputy Director at McDonald, in the back there. Winslow's own Jeffrey Nash. And Commissioner Melinda King. So the way we operate these town hall meetings is that we have representatives, of course, from each level of government, who will take three to five minutes to talk about some of the things happening at their level of government. After that, after we're all done, we will open up the floor to questions from all of you. And we have two people with microphones who will be walking around. Just raise your hand when you want to ask a question, and we will respond to that question. Tonight's first speaker will be Mayor Marie Lawrence. Mayor Lawrence was appointed mayor of Winslow in March of last year. Prior to her appointment, she served on Winslow Township Committee as a representative of the Third Ward since 2004, and served as deputy mayor from 2009 through 2022. Over the course of her tenure, Winslow Township Committee, she has overseen multiple entities. She's been the Director of Public Safety, Director of Administration, Director of Revenue and Finance, and Chairperson of the A.D. Hock Green Committee. So it's my honor to introduce Mayor Lawrence. Mayor?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. And congratulations to George Cathy again. We are so proud of you and that you are a resident of our Winslow. Okay. We have some very important people in here tonight. We have some organizations in here tonight. And I'm going to try to zip through. If I miss you, I'm sorry. But I tried to capture what I could. We have Committeeman Carlos Vasquez, Winslow Township. Committeeman Raymond Watkins. Okay. Deputy Mayor Charles Flamini. I think, oh, he's here. Okay. And Committeeman John Wilson. That's our, part of our governing body. Others here that are part of our governing body are Joseph Gallagher, our Township Administrator. Davida Jacoby-Hart, Director of Personnel. Our Police Chief, Don Lemons. Lisa Doherty, our Municipal Clerk. Carla Hudson, our Supervisor of Code Enforcement. Now, that's the township. Then we'll get in another direction. Dr. Major Potte, Superintendent of Winslow Schools. Cheryl Pitts, School Board President. Former County Commissioner, former Deputy Mayor of Winslow, former committee person in Winslow, Barbara Holcomb. As a group, the veterans from Ron Wright Post Number 303 in Winslow. School Board Member Joe Thomas. Tony Kinnell from our Genesis Lodge. Former Township Member Bob Stomelski. And as a group, we're glad to have you here because we know sometimes at night it's a little issue, but we're glad to have you here. Our Winslow Township seniors. It's a whole group of them here. Thank you for coming out. We have Colonel Wayne McFadden, Police Administrator from the Delaware River Bay Authority. There you go. He's in the back somewhere, Wayne. And Bishop and Mrs. Scott from West Attico. Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay. Now, I'm just going to give you a little bit of information about Winslow, and we'll move the program on. First off, I want to thank the Commissioners for bringing this town hall here to Winslow. You know, Winslow is on the move. We're on everybody's radar, and we want to stay on your radar. First off, we want to thank the county for Maze Landing Road Repaving Project, which is about to begin. The Oak Forest Development in the Township Resurfacing is to begin this spring. They've started the stormwater piece, and we have a partial state grant. We have funding from the New Jersey Department of Transportation to resurface Meeting House Circle in Wilton's, Meeting House Circle, Wilton Landing Road, and Prospect Road in Wilton's Corner. And we'll also install new crosswalks, traffic markings, and that's estimated to start late 2023, early 2024. Did you hear that, Wilton's Corner?
Yeah.
Okay. Brightmore, that's in Siklerville. 312 apartments in commercial retail phase. You see, if you pass it every day, you see all the utilities going in. That's going to be 312 units. Dollar General broke ground last week on Route 73 by the Coal Cow. Legacy Acres, that's almost fully complete. That's 55-plus age, 55 and over age development in Tansville. That's 94 single-family homes. We have Carriage Homes on Sikler Avenue. That's in the rear of Arbor Meadows off of Church Road. 52 townhouses, and they are complete. We've partnered with Virtua for the weekly mobile farmers market at Winslow Crossings in Siklerville every Wednesday morning. They return on Friday and go to CCU Senior Housing. And that is open to everyone. April 1st, we're partnering with our Township Employers and the surrounding area, because they've been coming under us. We will be having a job fair right here in this building, April 1st, 10 to 12. Okay. Township events coming up. June 17th, June to 17th, 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. in New Brooklyn Park. That's our favorite location. Family Day, August 19th, New Brooklyn Park. We're proud. We're very proud this year. We're going to have fireworks on July 1st at the high school. Thank you, Dr. Potte, for allowing us to give it at that location. We're bringing back the painting in the park for the whole family. And we'll have that and some other type of activities for families this summer. The best way for you to stay informed is to use the Township Nixel Alerts. Text your ZIP code to 8888777 to opt in. Any issues about Township services, you can download My Winslow app and ask questions. Put a ticket in for concern, for your concerns. Okay. Thank you. That's it for Winslow. Is that enough? Did I give you enough information? Okay. Have a good evening.
All right. Next, we have the Assemblyman Moriarty. The Assemblyman has done a tremendous job in Trenton. Certainly a man of the people. How many of you remember the assemblyman when he was on Philadelphia Network News as the consumer advocate? Was it NBC or CBS? I remember that. Well, his advocacy for people has not stopped in Trenton. In fact, it's become more intense. And the people of his district are very fortunate to have such a hard worker. And he just does a great job. He's a great partner for us as a county in Trenton, always responding to our needs. It's my honor to introduce the Assemblyman Moriarty.
Well, good evening, everyone. What a turnout. I think most of the people came out for Staff Sergeant Cathy, though. Not to see us. Politicians? Are you kidding me? Listen, it's an honor to represent Winslow in the state of New Jersey. It's a great privilege. And, you know, we're working on a lot of good things, and I want to just briefly tell you about some things. But first, I want to ask, how many people know what the Anchor Program is? Raise your hands. That's good news, because the Anchor Program supplants the Homestead Rebate Program, and it's going to get you more money. And if you don't know about the Anchor Program, and you haven't signed up for it, you should go over to our booth over here on the left and sign up for it, or give them your name, and we'll contact you. Because what it's going to do is, anyone that makes under $250,000 a year, how many people make over $250,000 here? Okay. So I think most of you qualify. If you make under $250,000, you're going to get a nice check in May. If you make under $150,000, the check will be $1,500. And if you make under 200, between 150 and 250, the check will be $1,000. And if you're, and these are homeowners. But if you're a renter, and you make under $150,000, you'll get a check for $450. So please make sure you're signed up for the Anchor Program. If you're not, see one of our people over at our Fourth District booth over here. And let's look forward to those checks in May, okay? And then the other thing is, how many people are in the Senior Freeze Program? Okay, those little blue books you have to fill out will be coming very shortly. Don't forget to set, to fill it out. You've got to fill it out each year to be qualified. Our office helps so many people fill those out every single year. We're happy to take your calls or come to our office in person. We'll help you fill it out. If you don't know what the program is, and you're over 65, you should know what the program is, because it will freeze your taxes, so that as taxes go up in subsequent years, you don't have to pay the increases. If you don't know what the Senior Freeze is, again, see our people over here on the left. For those of you who know what it is, those books will be coming soon. Don't forget to fill them out. As for what I'm doing in Trenton these days, I am the Chairman of the Consumer Affairs Committee. I've been a consumer advocate for many, many years prior to even being in the Assembly. And some of the things that I've been working on, and I hope to bring to fruition this year, my main thrust has been working in the past year on legislation to bring some kind of regulation in the home contractor field. There are so many unscrupulous, unethical home contractors out there. Now, most of them are great, but there are many people that try to scam people. They come and they say they'll do your replacement windows, or new driveway, or deck, or whatever. And they want some money upfront, and then they never show. Or they show, and they do a little work, and then they never finish it. Or they don't even, if they do finish it, it falls apart. We need to bring some sanity into the home contracting field. And this is what's amazing about the home, the fact that home contractors aren't regulated, licensed, and have to prove some type of proficiency. Do you realize in this state, if you want to paint fingernails and become a manicurist, you have to go to school for hundreds of hours, pass a test, get a license, and be subject to the Health Department coming in and checking on you occasionally. But if you want to pound nails, you don't have to prove that you even know how to pound a nail. That's how bad it has been in this state and many other states in this country. So if you want to pound nails, doesn't matter. Anybody can do it. I could do it. Your dog could do it. You can get a license to be a home contractor. All you have to do is pay a fee. You don't have to prove any proficiency. But if you want to paint nails, you're going to have to do 1,200 hours of study. 1,200 hours, because you have to become a cosmetologist. So we're going to bring some sanity into the regulations of the profession of home contracting. We're going to elevate the profession. We're going to make them prove some proficiency. We're going to make sure that they have a certain amount of insurance, so that if they damage your house or damage your property, that they have insurance. And we're going to make sure that they all have to meet some bonding requirements, which means that they would have to buy a bond, you know, at a certain level. It could be a $100,000 bond. But you, you know, you don't have to pay $100,000. It's like, you pay a portion of that. And then if they don't finish work that they started at your house, there's a bond you can go after to finish the work. And we're also going to have to come up with a testing procedure too, so that not anyone can get a home contracting license. So we hope to pass that this month, actually, in the General Assembly, and hope to pass it in the Senate and get that passed. Another bill that I'm working on is one that I think discriminates against people that are in the digital divide. Not everybody has a smartphone and knows how to use it real well. And a lot of families don't even have internet service at their home. We have to worry about the people that are being marginalized because they're not part of the latest digital revolution. And so, one of the things that I noticed is that, how many people here use coupons when they go shopping? Anyone? Not, not a few, yeah. There's a lot of discounts and coupons, not just for groceries, but for a wide, you know, for home repair, for auto repair, whatever. And they only get them on your smartphone. And so a lot of people don't even get these discounts because they're not part of today's digital society. They're not dancing on TikTok, right? Well, some people are a bit. But, so, we're going to make it so that if you offer a discount in a digital environment, that you also have to make it available at point-of-sale, or at kiosks in stores, or paper coupons, so that everybody can get the discount. Not just the people that probably don't even need it. People that don't have internet service, and people that don't have smartphones probably need discounts a lot more than some of the people that do. And a third thing I want to talk about is this creeping new type of way to extract money from people when they buy a car. Car companies now want to charge subscriptions for things like heated seats, heated steering wheels, four-wheel drive. And they have a whole list of things that they want to start charging you a subscription. So what they want to do is sell you a car that has all of these things already in there. All the components are in there, but they're not all turned on. So you buy this BMW, and it's got heated seats, it's got a heated steering wheel, but you've got to pay a monthly fee to have it turned on from some remote location. This is incredible. I had an executive tell me, well, we think that we, we would like to build all of our cars with four-wheel drive already in it, but we'll only have two-wheel drive turned on, because a lot of people don't want four-wheel drive. And when you want it, you'll pay each month. I said, no. So we have a bill that would say that, if you sell me a car, whatever components that are already in the car have to be working. Because, well, they said, well, what if you don't want that? I mean, you know, you shouldn't have to pay for it. I said, well, I already paid for the components that are in the car. Are you telling me you put heated seats in there, and I didn't pay for the coils and the wiring? I already paid for that car. So we got to stop this, this, this money grab by a lot of companies that want this recurring revenue each month, and they think that they can get it through these subscription services. My God, I'm tired of subscription services. They want you now to pay $3 a month for your Ring doorbell. What are we going to do next? Pay a monthly fee for our toaster? So these are the kinds of things I'm working on. They may not be real sexy, but to me, they're important because they're pocketbook issues. And last year, I got passed a bill that made a sales tax holiday for back-to-school. And it was a whole week where you could go and buy all kinds of back-to-school items, including computers, $1,500 computers, and not have to pay sales tax. We're going to do that again this year. I hope next year we're going to do one that, where we try to do a spring cleaning sales tax holiday. sales tax holiday, where people can go out and buy stuff that they, you know, for yard work and, you know, cleanup and all kinds of tools, that we could do the same thing. So we're trying to make things more affordable. And again, last call. Make sure you go over there if you haven't heard about the Anchor Program or the Senior Freeze. And with that, I'll cede my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymen. Great work in Trenton. Great work. I've been informed, we also have a couple other elected officials that have joined us tonight. The mayor of Waterford, Tom Giannuglio. Tom, there he is in the back. And the deputy mayor of Waterford as well, Andy Wade. I see Andy. There he is. Thanks to both of you for coming out tonight. Next, we will hear from Congressman Norcross. Congressman is an electrician by trade. He will tell you that he is the only electrician in Congress and that there are too many lawyers. I don't agree with that, but it is what it is. He currently serves as the House Committee on Education and Labor, the House Armed Services Committee. He is chair of the Subcommittee on Tactical Air and Land Forces and vice-chair and liaison to labor for the Congressional Progressive Caucus. A great fighter for us day in and day out in Washington, Congressman Norcross.
Thank you, Lou. So Paul, how did we get coupons on this? I never got a coupon on my phone. You can't beat the flip phone, baby. It works. And the Russians can't get it. But hey, thanks for coming out tonight. Wonderful to see you. Great turnout, Mayor. You always do the best here. And certainly to those who have served and put on the uniform like George did, thank you for your service. We see it each and every day and giving us the ability as a group, as a community, to come out and share in that. And I will start out by, again, thanking the county because, you know, we've always had these community meetings, but very different. The idea of holding a town hall meeting just for a commissioner, just for the federal. No, we got together. So when you ask a question, you can't say, well, that's the county, that's the state. We're here together to try to answer whatever questions or concerns you have. And if we don't have it immediately, what you see around here are all the different services that the county, the state, and the federal government provide. So if we don't answer you, make sure you grab us afterwards. There might be some items that are personal in nature. You don't have to say it in front of everybody. You can come talk to us. So again, for both the state here in Winslow and the Camden County, thank you. And Barbara, it's great to see you. Barbara and I have worked together for, let's just say, a long time. We have a little bit of experience. Let's just go that way. So here we are. We are back, and there has been a lot going on. I literally just returned back from Eastern Europe as part of my congressional oversight to see what is going on with Ukraine. We're in Poland, Romania, to see what literally the world is doing to hold back on what this Russian illegal aggression is going on. And, you know, many people brought up, why are we involved in Ukraine? Well, many people said that about Germany right before the Second World War, and we saw where that went. There is no doubt in my mind that this is the right thing to do. And what we are doing is truly extraordinary. Nobody does it better than the United States in logistics and helping to defeat what is a real challenge, a real challenge to the world and to freedom. So as I said, it's great to be back here in Winslow. I'm down in Chiselshurst on Saturday for Black History Month. Looking forward to that. For those of you who can make it, we certainly appreciate it. But for those of you who were, I guess, having a tough time sleeping, we had a little bit of a tough time getting started in Congress this year. It took 15 votes to come upon the new speaker. And it was interesting because New Jersey has a new representative from up in Hudson County. Albi O'Searez retired, and young Rob Menendez was elected as the new congressman. You're asking, why is that? Well, his dad was sitting with him, Senator Menendez, as he was about to be sworn in. Well, in order to be sworn in, there has to be an election of a speaker first. So it was the first ballot, it was the second ballot, and third ballot. And if you know Senator Menendez, he's not going to sit around a lot. But he put out what I think it was the classic quote. He goes, "In all my years in the House of Representatives, I only got to vote for a speaker four times. My son has surpassed me in one day by voting for a speaker 15 times." But we did get it back together, and this is the closest margin in at least 150 years, which presents some real issues, but also prevent or presents opportunities. I am someone that, when it comes to the election, we go to our respective corners and Republican, Democrat, blue, red, and you fight to make sure your message is out, and democracy works. But after you're sworn in, you put your hand on that Bible, it's about getting the work done for our town, our country, and certainly the state of New Jersey. And I am as committed to getting that done and working across the aisle without, let me put it this way. Anybody here ever been married? Bringing together the best of ideas. For those of you who don't do real well, well, we know what happens there. It is incumbent upon all of us to work together. Now, that deserves a round of applause. It's called democracy. So over the last couple of years, obviously, the pandemic has taken an incredible toll. But we got through it. We lost loved ones. We lost friends. But together as a nation, we were able to pull through. You know, early on, couldn't get masks. I mean, it seems like a long time ago. It wasn't. There was no vaccine. There was no real treatment. We were just making sure that we were putting money in the pockets. Remember the food distributions that we had? People were just trying to survive. The idea of trying to have your kids go and learn online in school, it helped, but certainly not the most effective way. But we pulled together as a nation. And during that time, we brought home more dollars to our district than in the history of this country because we needed it as a country. In Winslow, $3.7 million just in municipality. $4.1 million to the school district. So we could address what was going on to make sure that when the kids got back in school, it was safe for both them, the teachers, and the staff. Well, in addition to that, we did the American Rescue Plan, the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. This is about infrastructure. It never used to be a partisan issue. We tried previous four years to get it done, didn't get it done. We did it in bipartisan way, and we got it done to the tune of trillions of dollars. And what that will mean, from the county to state, we're talking about replacing the lead lines. For those of you who are in some of the communes that are still fed by that, lead paint removal, road repair. You think we need that? If you drove here tonight, you certainly know the answer. But it's also about our ports, our infrastructure. So that was incredibly important. Flooding. We're going to do a bunch of the towns along the river who've been just arguing with that problem for years. Something called the Chips and Science Act. I had been preaching long before I was ever in public service about building it in America. Well, over the course of the last 25 years, we have offshore so much of that manufacturing, and we found out what happened. It's called the supply chain. It broke, and we're still paying the price for that. So the CHIPS Act is literally going to bring back much of that manufacturing, the chips that you couldn't buy cars. Everything was backed up is because we invented the chip and then sent it overseas. We're bringing it back. And I think that was a bipartisan issue that certainly people are looking at. The Inflation Reduction Act. Now, for those of you on Medicare, capping out-of-pocket expenses to 2K a year. Giving Medicaid the ability to negotiate drug prices. Are you kidding me? This is so long overdue, and it's going to start to help incredibly important. And for those who are insulin, capping that at $35 a month. It's about this great country who innovates. We all paid the price of innovation. Much of the research that is done for pharmaceutical companies comes out of tax dollars because we know how important it is. But our country ends up paying the highest cost for our prescriptions. Seems a little bit backwards. So we're bringing them, even though we are the medicine chess here in New Jersey for semi-pharmaceuticals, incredibly important that we level that playing field. And something near and dear to me, and certainly we think of George, it's called the BRAV Act. My bill is to give opportunities for those returning from service into the apprenticeship programs in the building trades. They put their life on hold. We want to make sure that they're first in line when they come back. That was incredibly important. So just a couple of quick things, and then I want to open it up to the county for Lou. And I want to talk about something that unfortunately has probably touched everybody in this room. And that's over 100,000 people in our great country who've died from overdose, particularly with the opioids. 100,000 people a year. We need to take the shame out of it. It's a disease. It's no different than having a heart ailment, a broken leg, yet somehow they're treated differently. We need to have compassion, love, and sometimes tough love to make sure that they can get the treatment they need. The county has been in the forefront of putting the NarCam in schools and school buses to make sure that if somebody does have that moment where they overdose, that they have a chance. I was coming off 42 two Saturdays ago, coming right around by Dept. Mall. And right under the bridge, there's traffic and two police cars out there pumping on a man's chest who had overdosed. It knows no age. It knows no income standards. Doesn't know if you're black, white, green, or blue. It's a disease. And we have tried to do what we can do, but it takes a community to bring this back. So we pledged to continue to do that, whether it's the methadone bill that we just had passed and signed into law to make it more available for those. I know people look at it from different perspectives. And we have a caucus in Congress that is called the Addiction Caucus. Unfortunately, it is the largest caucus in Congress. But you know, when somebody comes to join it, it's a reason. Somebody close to them, somebody they know who overdosed and died. And they said, I need to understand this better. Well, unfortunately, you shouldn't take a death of somebody you know to understand this. Mental health is as real as anything else, and we can make a difference. And I just ask each and every one of you to make sure that when help is needed, be there for someone. The county, the state has put tremendous resources in, and we want to make sure they get connected. But let me end it up with some good news. Community funding projects. You're going, what the hell is that? Earmarks, remember those? It is the opportunity for the members of Congress to bring back to their community what they see as needed projects. And we have been blessed, it started last year, to make sure that there is competitive process and that you have the ability for, whether it's government, nonprofits, or others. And today, I was down at Rutgers to present a $1.4 million check to Rutgers that they reach out to the community to try to link those who want a higher education but might have some barriers, to try to break those down. And that's incredibly important. The county got one this year for Nutrition Hub. Did you ever think we would need that? Pandemic was tough, but that underlying issue has always been there. The food bank, we got a million-dollar grant for them to expand. Their trucks were being worn down. They were being used that much. The pro bono clinic, which I know Commissioner Nash is very much involved in, a half a million-dollar check for those. Not everybody can afford the lawyers, and they do some terrific work. And we wanted to make sure that they had help. $2 million for a transplant clinic for virtual hospital. How many people know someone that need a kidney, lungs, or so many others? So we're going to help with that. And certainly for a VOA for something none of us want to see, and that's human trafficking. Yes, it takes place right here in this country, so we're helping them. So I just want to say thank you. This is democracy. We're going to have an exchange of views. You're going to hopefully get some answers to questions. If we're not here, you can go around to the side tables and make sure you ask those questions. But for you to come out at night, when you could be at home flicking through the TV, thank you. You're participating in exactly what the founders of our country, it's called a democracy. And we just want to say, on behalf of grateful nation, thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. And I will take an opportunity to talk about some of the work being done by the Camden County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Winslow and the region. First and foremost, thanks to the leadership of Commissioner Nash, Deputy Director McDonald, and the cooperation of Mayor Lawrence. We will be building a Jake's Place Playground in New Brooklyn Park. For those of you who are not familiar with Jake's Place, it's a playground for special-needs children and adults. There are renderings in the back. We previously assisted in building one in Cherry Hill, and it is just a magnificent facility. And we are just thrilled to bring Jake's Place down here to Winslow in New Brooklyn Park. Also, under Commissioner Nash's leadership, once again, we are preserved. First of all, how many of you love corn on a cob? Jersey, corn on a cob? Is there anything better? Ed, you don't like corn on a cob? Oh, there we go. All right. We have preserved Stella Farm forever. We'll always be growing corn on Stella's farm. Over the past year, the Department of Public Works has invested $35 million in roadways and bridges in Camden County. This year, we will be investing $40 million in bridges and roads in Camden County. Part of that is due to the increase in funding from the state gas tax, and part of that is due to the generous grants that we receive from the federal government. So some of the programs include work on Turnersville Road, about a, get my glasses on, $8 million project, Berlin-Cross Keys Road, Phase III in Gloucester and Winslow Township. Also, on Turnersville Road to New Freedom Road, a $7 million project on those roads, Phase IV. And on Sicklerville Road in Winslow Township, drainage and roadway improvements, Choose Landing Road to Cross Keys Road, $3 million. So we are investing literally millions of dollars in roads and bridges here in Winslow Township. Congressman Norcross mentioned some of the issues we've been having with the opioid addiction crisis. Camden County did join in a couple of the class action lawsuits over the past few years. As a result of those lawsuits, we will be receiving about $2 million per year for approximately 20 years to help deal with this crisis. And one of the things we're doing, we issued an RFP today for a behavioral health urgent care to be built in Camden County. So we all get to go to urgent cares, right, for illnesses, broken bones. But for years and years, mental health has been neglected in this country. And as the Congressman mentioned, it's time to bring it to the forefront. And we believe that a mental health urgent care is desperately needed in Camden County. We think it'll be the first in the state once it comes, so we will keep you posted on that. With that, we will, thank you. We have now opened the floor up to the questions. We will have two people with microphones, one on each side. We're going to ask you to just ask one question when you're called upon, and we will do our best to answer the question. And as the Congressman mentioned, if we run out of time, we will be sticking around. We have a whole government fair back there, all levels of government, to answer your questions. So if you have a question, please raise your hand. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Name and question, name, town, and question, please.
Okay. Des Butler, West Berlin.
Des Butler, West Berlin. We have a problem on Route 73 heading south at Cooper. There are more cars trying to turn left off of 73 onto Cooper, and they end up backing up, blocking the traffic on 73. Frequently, I cannot get into the lane to make the left-hand turn. And I understand that there was some talk about improvements being done there, but I don't see any signs of improvements occurring.
That would, okay, so that's a state highway? I don't have an answer to that question.
It's a state and county, I believe. You got a county road also there.
Yeah, but I think it's the, I think, we will double check.
It is, it is the state 73.
Right, and so they control the intersection.
Yes, but we're all at risk.
Understood, understood. So we will, if we can take your information, we will look into that. Oh, Bob Harris, you have, we may have some news on that.
Uh-huh.
Oh, great, great, thank you.
By the way, as an electrician, I wired that intersection. That's how old it is. Yeah, I think we do need an upgrade. One of my last jobs.
Did you?
Yeah, unbelievable.
And it all still works.
And it all still works, yeah.
Any other questions? There we go.
I'm Jeff Player, master builder and master gardener. And you were kind enough to give me that certificate some years ago. This is my lovely wife Cheryl. She's an ICU nurse, and she was on the front lines of COVID during the whole pandemic. Suffered a broken neck, had to have three vertebrae replaced, and saw the thick of it. We are so thankful to the county for the work they did with the vaccine and all the things you've done for the park services and everything. It just makes it a pleasure to live in. Our problem is, we live next door to a white supremacist who's made our life absolute hell. And we're looking for services somewhere. Our township has turned their back on us. The code commissioner cites a simple arch as being a dangerous, hazardous, unsanitary condition, and we're being fined for it. They are obviously friends of hers. The court system has been ultra lenient, it's obvious over the years. I came here a couple of years ago with the same problem. It's been obvious for a couple of years, she's friends of the court clerk and friends of the judge in Gloucester Township. We have been tortured relentlessly, horn honking, a nurse trying to sleep before her shift and after her shift, meant to disrupt, okay? It's never ended. We've been through this COVID, it's been hard on us. I have cancer, PTSD from all this stuff. We're just trying to get through it. I don't know if the pro bono can help us or something.
We need, we need help. We are appealing to anyone and everyone who could help us. Been tormented for so long, and now our neighbor, white supremacist, is now recruiting Gloucester Township officials who are coming to our home and raiding us and telling us that it's okay for her to chop our trees.
You can see our gardens, their therapy gardens for everybody that wants to come. They've benefited so many people. And we called her hire, trying to use an unlicensed contractor when she thought we weren't home to hack at them. And while there are laws that when things overhang a property line, you can see by the bottom pictures, she is mentally disturbed, she has done a Russian Army clear cut, chainsawed every plant in her property, and now she wants to go after our property. My wife's work is so hard, she's put so many people in body bags, and that's how her neck was snapped. And I try to give her a nice garden so she can heal, but we can't even spend time in our own home. And then we're attacked by code because he thinks this arch right over on the left is a hazard and unsanitary, okay? Because he's a friend of hers, he's going to punish us for stopping it, that we wanted to see license. New Jersey law is qualified tree cutters under the supervision of an arborist, okay? The township has told us they will not enforce those laws, they're administrative, okay? And yet she has a free pass. You might as well tie her hands.
She tried to run us over a few times, and the township looked away.
They issued a ticket for reckless driving only.
So we will, I am very sorry to hear all of this. So if, no, no, you didn't. And we're very, I'm sorry to hear all of this, it's just terrible, terrible things that we're hearing here. This is the first we're hearing of it. It sounds like a Gloucester Township issue, but what we will do, if you can stick around after, we'll take your information and see what we can find out and get back to you, sir. And ma'am.
At some point, the prosecutor contacted us because she had a false charge against me unsupported by any documentation which was thrown out of court. They said at that point, they couldn't get Bob, but they would.
Okay, we'll see what we can find out. I'm sorry for your troubles. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Anthony Mathis, I'm from Sicklerville. This is to Councilman Norcroft. He's still here? Okay. I'm a retired United States Navy, 21 years, and I'm disabled, disabled at 30%. At 30%, what they do is they take from my retirement check 30% and they let it be tax exempt. I don't need that. However, if I had 50%, they would give me a check for that amount of money. I don't get any money, I just get a deduction, and I don't need a tax deduction. So I want to bring that to you. I think they ought to change the rules that if I'm retired military, I get a check just like anybody else who only does non-retired. Do you understand what I'm saying?
So, yes, and there's a lot of details that we need to find out. We have a wounded warrior person specifically for our office, but we want to make sure what the state versus what the federal government and that young man to your left, we'll make sure somebody gets with you, right there, Daley, good-looking guy right there. We'll get your details and try to address it right here tonight.
Thank you for your service. Good evening. My name's Denise Coyne, I'm from Gloucester Township, and I'm here representing a group of people, and I have a statement I'd like to read. We want to express our concern about the ongoing violation of citizens' rights to representation and free speech by the council of Gloucester Township. The council is routinely canceling workshop meetings, introducing ordinances as last-minute walk-ons, trying to limit free speech by saying political speech is not allowed, refusing to provide clear, concise, and timely answers to citizens' questions, and retaliating against citizens who question them. We have one councilwoman who has shown up for only 17 out of 53 meetings, which is a 32% attendance record. She's collecting 100% of her pay. As residents of Gloucester Township, we believe that it's essential for council members to be accountable to the citizens they serve and for the citizens to have an opportunity to engage in meaningful dialogue with their elected representatives. However, the actions of council are making it increasingly difficult for citizens to have their voices heard and for council members to be held accountable for their decisions. The Constitution gives us the right to question our government, and our government has a legal obligation to be transparent and accountable as a result. If there's no transparency, there's no accountability. If there's no accountability, there's no representation. If there's no representation, there is no democracy. We consent to being governed in exchange for our government protecting our rights. When those who govern no longer keep their part of the deal, they must be removed. We're following the chain of command, so to speak, and we're asking you to investigate these ongoing violations and to take appropriate action to ensure that the rights of the citizens are protected. And I personally would like to know, who do our elected and appointed officials answer to?
The residents.
How?
Through elections and through inquiries, and just like we're doing here tonight, we're responding to you tonight. Your issues in particular with Gloucester Township, I can't really speak to the speech you just gave. I'm not familiar with those issues, but it's certainly a matter that you should take up with the governing body in Gloucester Township.
We've done that, and we never get any help. They, I mean, it doesn't work. So we need to go to the next level, and I'm asking who that is.
It's the elections that they have every year, that's the level. Thank you. Next question, please.
My name's Dick Hamilton, I live in Hearthstone of Wedgewood, 55 in older community. And we have only one way getting out of our community. And if we want to go back home, we're on the other side of the 73, we have to go a mile to get back. And that's not the main concern of the people, but we have a lot of sick people. And when the ambulance comes, they have to go a mile out of the way to get in our community. And we were promised there would have been a turnaround right at that turnaround where we come in our community. And when they replaced the light poles down at the other end by Old Factory Road, they could have moved those right up, wouldn't have cost anything just to put them in, and they would have been done. Saved a lot of money. But we need that turnaround for the people that are.
What road is that, sir? I'm sorry, that's.
73.
73, okay, gotcha.
And it's where we get in our community, and across the street they have an exit, they have two entrances and two exits right there. We only have one in and one out.
Who promised you that? The builder?
Yeah, when we, they said, you will probably get that, the state will probably take care of that. But, yeah, we got lied to. But it would be very, it's very important, and it's a serious matter because the ambulance has to go a mile out of the way to get in our community if somebody's sick.
Bob and Jim, can you take this gentleman's information, and then we'll look into it with the state and get back to you, sir?
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Herman Bethay, I live here in Sicklerville Township here. I'm sure that everybody here is aware of too of what's going on throughout the country, all the shooting and everything. I want to know, do the township as well as the county, do you have any plans or what you're going to, what can we do? Thank God we haven't had that here, but what do you have in mind, or what kind of plans that you plan on doing to prevent this?
So first, from the county level, I can say this. The Board of Commissioners have been working very closely with a group called Moms Demand Action. And we've been working with that group to help raise awareness of gun safety issues and to get laws passed that make it difficult for people who shouldn't have guns to have guns. I can tell you, we have events every year, listen on our website. We actually have a public service announcement out right now talking about gun safety and storage of guns. But as far as if an emergency does occur, through our emergency services, we have coordinated with every municipality here in Camden County as to, you know, X, Y, or Z incident. We are prepared for it. Hopefully, it never happens. We've had some false alarms over the past couple of years, but I can tell you through our emergency services, we've coordinated with the entire county, each municipality, on how to respond to an emergency. And Congressman, if you want to add anything to that. So it's interesting that if we look back in history of the United States, the idea of the Second Amendment is something that many people look towards as a vital right of Americans. And I think most people understand that the idea of hunting for game is something that they would agree upon. First mass shooting was in Camden City. Howard Ungra, almost 50 years ago, went in, I think it was 13 people. One of his murders took place inside a shop where the grandmother took her granddaughter up, put her in the closet, shut her in. Ungra killed the two grandparents, she survived. She survives the shooting, her child down in Florida of the high school. It's generational. Only to top that, the shooting this past week in Michigan State, you heard where one of those survivors was a survivor of the elementary school in Sandy Hook. Wow. The idea that 90-plus percent of Americans believe in background checks, and we have tried and tried and tried and cannot get anything through Congress. We're not talking about taking away your right to hunt, your Second Amendment right, but the idea of common sense, we all agree with background checks, that you don't need a submachine gun. You're not hunting for deer with that. But the idea that there's this black and white, we can't cross the line, and yet we sit here time after time. I can't tell you how many of my colleagues get up and have had a mass shooting. I was out in Denver with a dear colleague of mine who represents the area, and we're up at Noah going over a number of things, and he passed by a supermarket, he goes, that's where my mass shooting was. No other country in this world does this. This isn't a Republican or Democrat issue? There's no common ground? Come on, there is. But it's only going to change when we decide as a democracy to say it will change. Until that time comes, we're going to have more discussions like this, the county will do what they're doing. I know the state is working on a number of those issues. Background checks, the simplest of things. I can't tell you how frustrating it is when I meet the mothers who lost a child in school, that our kids are doing more safety drills for a shooter than they are for fire drills. That was the big thing when we were in school, active shooters. It's going to take a democracy that comes together and it is not divided. I will share you with that. There are a number of bills that we have had before us that are still going to be reintroduced, and we will try to vote on them again. But when we have a country that's so divided, and on this issue, completely divided, talk to your neighbors. That's what it's going to take, some of us coming together. That's the reality. The State has some of the most strict laws in the nation, so why don't you talk about what you think the State does?
Yeah, we do, and, but what I, the question was, how are we preparing? I think that was it. And I think we've passed a lot of bills to try to restrict guns getting in the hands of people that shouldn't have guns. And some of that has been struck down by the courts, quite frankly. But we did just pass, in terms of preparedness, we passed a bill last November, and it doesn't take effect until this May, but here's where we are in the United States, that now we are requiring all sports, entertainment facilities, movie theaters, and places of worship to annually prepare and maintain an emergency preparation plan in coordination with the local fire, law enforcement, and emergency response.
That's where we are.
Agencies. A copy of this plan would be filed each year, it would include blueprints of egress entrances and departures, any kind of tunnels, so that they would know, you know, if an emergency occurred, they would have plans on file to know the building, et cetera. So that's where we are in 2023, that we now have to make this an annual report. But it is important to have in terms of preparedness, so that our local law enforcement officials know all of these buildings and are able to access them safely and figure out how they can get in there and maybe breach a building if there is someone in there holding hostages. But, you know, I agree with the Congressman, this is going to take a lot of people coming together in a very divided United States at the moment.
This past Valentine's Day was the five-year anniversary of the Parkland School shooting. That year, five years ago, there were about 170,000 kids in the United States exposed to a violent act with guns. Last year, there were almost 350,000 children in the United States exposed to a violent act with guns. The leading cause of death last year for children and teenagers was gunshots. Think about that. In this nation, that's the number one.
In this nation, that's the number one cause of death for children. So I think the nation is divided, as the congressman said. I think the citizens are more united than some of the members of Congress who are bought and paid for by the NRA. And that really is what it comes down to. Really what it comes down to. We will take two more questions.
Hello, my name is Stella Welser, and I'm from Berlind Borough. And I wanted to know if there's something that can be done about the unemployment system in the state. It's probably 50 years outdated. When you call the phone numbers that they have, you either get two messages. One saying, all lines are busy, please call back tomorrow, but it's like Groundhog Day. It's the same message every day. Or you get the message saying, please leave a message, and then you get the mailbox is full. And then you can't get ahold of a person. There's no email address to, to send anybody a message or a question or anything. There's no online form that you could just say, hey, I just have a question about this or just can I send you the document? And the only way to communicate with somebody is to, if you're lucky to get a name from somebody, you could send them physically the papers in the mail, or they tell you to fax the information. I mean, can something be done about that?
Well, I know Paul will. I know we will. First of all, it sounds like Comcast, but that's another story. No disrespect. If I could reach through the phone, but.
We have to have to do better. This unemployment system is completely broken, and it started at the beginning of the pandemic when they, you know, they used to have, in the worst month of unemployment, they might have 10, 15,000 new applications for unemployment. And you know what happened when the pandemic happened and everybody went home? They had like a million, like that. And their computer systems outdated, they could not handle it at all. They have not recovered. It's abysmal. What you've described just scratches the surface, quite frankly. And so we have recently passed a bill, myself and Senator Madden from this district, requiring the, that department to offer and, and provide in-person meetings. That doesn't yet go into effect, but they know that they have to start doing that. In the meantime, I tell everybody, and I'm happy to give out my card to everybody here, don't even bother calling them. If you call our office, Jeff, don't call them. Call our office. We will create a file with your name and your situation, and we will make all those frustrating phone calls. We have different phone numbers than you, quite frankly, and we will get to someone that we will hound, and we will do the work for you. Otherwise, you will tear out all your lovely hair. Let us do that. I don't have much hair left. So we will do that for you. It's not the solution. We are working on this. They have to update all the systems. They have to dig out from, still digging out from the pandemic. They have so many difficult cases because they had so many workers that did not have easy cases. You know, if you have been working for a company for 15 years and suddenly they lay you off in the pandemic, well, they know where you've been working. It's an easy situation. But when you have all these people working in the gig economy, gig economy, you know, that are working for Lyft and Uber and DoorDash and this, and maybe they got another job here, and they're cobbling all this together and saying, I qualify for unemployment, and here's where I worked. And maybe they also worked over in Pennsylvania part-time, and now they got to go to Pennsylvania. They, they couldn't handle it. No excuse. They've treated a lot of people pretty shabbily, and that's why you got to call us. Just call us, the Fourth District Legislative Office. We have a booth down there. We have our cards, our phone numbers. Frankly, I tell people, anything that you, any problem you have, call us. Doesn't matter what it is. We'll tell you where to go. We'll tell you where, where to get results, or we'll, we'll make the calls ourselves. We work all the time with these offices here. If you call us and you have a problem, you know, I had a woman a couple of weeks ago. She had a trip out of the country and realized that her passport had expired. I'm going to call Mary Cruz, who's right over there. Raise your hand, Mary. Chief of Staff for Congressman Norcross. And I'm going to say, Mary, I have, I have someone that needs your help. Instead of me just saying, call Congressman Norcross's office, I tell our staff, no, we'll make those calls for them because if you just keep directing people, they'll give up. We'll call Mary. She'll have someone take care of it. They'll get you to go over to the Philadelphia Passport Office on an emergency basis, get a passport. I know I'm getting far afield from your issue, but the point is, we all work together, and your best bet is to call us.
Man, let me give you some good news. The number one call for our offices, state and county during the pandemic was unemployment. You went from going 12 miles an hour to 112 miles an hour. They were overloaded. They still have a Cobalt system. Anybody remember Cobalt? That's before 5-inch disc. So here's the good news. They actually created separate accounts that the legislators can get into for information. Made a tremendous difference. More people looking at it. This US government, Department of Labor, has issued a grant, a special grant to New Jersey to replace their system. It is in the works. It's coming, but it can't come quick enough. Marty Walsh, the Secretary of Labor, he and I had direct conversations along with our own commissioner. Listen, here are the tools I had, completely inadequate, everybody under stress. We know what the problem is. We know how to fix it, and now the money's there, and it's being replaced. Hopefully, we don't have another pandemic that we have to try it out on, but it is being fixed for once and for all.
All right, one more question. Yes, sir.
My name's Greg Sorsy. I live right in Heathermere in Winslow Township and resident of Winslow for 17 years. Graduated from Edford High School right across the street. Going to end the night with a bang, and I know my comment's not going to be real popular, but I really don't care. You guys are sworn in to uphold the Constitution of the United States. You guys work for us. About six months ago, I went to the Winslow Township Police Department. I applied for my concealed carry permit. The permit, the police department and the secretary could not be more helpful. Everything was great. Everything was smooth. I did all the training. I paid all the money. Mr. Moriarty, you want to talk about a money grab? The egregious bill, 4769, that was just passed, you guys should be ashamed of yourself. I would recommend this gentleman gets a gun if he's being harassed by his neighbors. What is the problem with law-abiding citizens defending themselves? I carry a gun everywhere I go, not in here because it's not permitted in here. I travel with my gun. I have reciprocity in 36 states. I've never had an urge to shoot somebody, brandish my gun, or anything like that. I have a right to protect myself as a law-abiding citizen. And I think.
It's not unlimited. It's not unlimited.
What's, what's not unlimited?
To have any weapon you want, to have any gun. It's not unlimited.
First of all, you're getting off topic. I didn't say it was.
You just talked about.
I have, I have.
First of all, why don't we just bring this tone down a little bit so we can have a conversation? We might disagree, but we can talk. Do you agree with that?
Sure.
Good. So there are, and I start out with the Second Amendment. We had that conversation, right?
I think the common, can I finish, please? I think the common ground is, in Uvalde and in Parkland, the police didn't do their job. They didn't get in there. If that was my kids, I'd be at the school.
And the one in Texas, right. There are times that.
The police have blood on their hands.
In that case.
And I've read what you've said, Mr. Capelli. Please, the floor is yours. Thank you for letting me ask my question.
Yeah, so. No, that's, that's the democracy. You and I might disagree on it, but you have the right to say that.
If you think guns are the answer, then look at every other industrialized nation in the world. Nobody murders like we do. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for, you want to say something?
I do want to say something. And, and just to kind of end the night, I want to take this opportunity to really thank you guys for putting these. You, you come together, you bring government together for us, and you stand there and you allow us to give you, us, the residents, the taxpayers, the voters, an opportunity to let you know our concerns. You try to answer what you can, and then you try to follow up on what you can. But what you, what I heard tonight also was something that was very, very good, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for that. And that's for bringing Jake's place here. For folks who have special needs children, it is so important for them to have not only a place to go and have fun, but a place for them and their families to go, to be, to feel safe, to have fun, to be stimulated in a way that's going to be positive for them. And this is such a huge, huge undertaking. And so I'm thankful, and on behalf of the residents of Camden County, I want to take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Nash, Deputy Commissioner McDonald, you, Director Capelli, the state, because I know you guys put some funds into that, Mayor Lawrence You for helping to bring this to Winslow Township. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. I just want to take these couple of seconds to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And to thank you for this, for this venue.
Thank you for coming out, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be ready if you have any other questions. Thank you.